Let me call to order the April 9, 2025 Pottstown Council Committee at the whole meeting. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Anyone? Infrastructure, Counselor Lewdowski.
It's in your packet.
Transportation, Counselor Proskow.
There was a meeting, and I think Courtney will probably distribute a packet later, but mostly it was just a bunch of maintenance complaints from the airport people.
Okay. And Ordnance Review, Counselor. Economic Development, Ms. Lee Clark.
So, paid staff has been spending the last three days in Philadelphia at the Main Street America Conference, where we were able to engage with Main Street professionals and economic development professionals throughout the United States. Very interesting, all of the things that people are looking at, and there's obviously a great focus on downtowns as suburban areas throughout the country are changing, malls are going away, how they repurpose those, and then what that does to driving businesses to the main streets across America. So, it's very interesting. September 12th, FET is on your agenda this evening, looking for a vote on Friday, Monday night, of approval, but we hope you'll all mark your calendars if you choose to approve that. We also, I wanted to talk a little bit about tariffs. So, we all have whiplash and headaches from this, but it is obviously something that affects many, many of our businesses, especially in the manufacturing sector here in Pottstown. So, we have been making, paid has been making a concerted effort to reach out to employers to find out how this is affecting them. And so, I can give you one concrete example, because it's very easy to get tied into Buy American, but one manufacturer who does deal in steel products has been contacted by his domestic suppliers saying their rates will go up, those prices will go up by 40% when tariffs across the pond are 25%. So, where do you think he's going to buy his steel from? So, I think we also have to be very careful. We all, you're all experts in seeing how long development takes, especially when you're building ground up. Nobody is opening up in six months, a facility that is a warehousing or manufacturing facility that has to be built ground up. So, I think there are all the things that we have to really be paying attention to from an employment sector. And I do have one slide tonight, because I want to clarify some things about the bid, which is top of mind, coming right from the Main Street. So, I want to clarify, there's been some miscommunication out there, but there are, if you are looking at the 290 income-producing properties, you see by that chart that 90% of them, it's not thousands of dollars a year, it is approximately $350 annually, with an average monthly cost to those property owners of $29 a month. So, it's three mills, and I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that, because I want them to make an informed decision. And then, in the next slide, if you will, I cannot be any clearer, no bid, no $225,000 from the state. We will be ineligible to apply for that money. And I also met with some of our local representatives from DCED, the Department of Community and Economic Development. We were unsuccessful this round in facade grants that we had applied for, but we will be a lot more successful, because our score will go up, just in the strength of having a bid established. So, that will make us eligible and more likely to get other grants besides just this $225,000. And that is my report for economic development.
Okay. And for the land bank?
The land bank, I've already told you last month, that Habitat for Humanity had purchased the property, the one property Land Bank had for sale. That is in the process now, the solicitor of Land Bank is working out the agreement, and hopefully, they'll go to settlement soon. One thing that I want to remind everybody of is, there is an ability, if you know an entity or a family that would like to donate a property to the Land Bank, they just want to get it off their plate, there are things that they can do by donating to the Land Bank that would be advantageous to them.
Good.
And that's my report.
Thank you. From Human Relations, Ms. Levin Good.
Good evening, Counselors, Council President and Madam Mayor. Christians around the world will celebrate Easter on Sunday, April 20th, and the Jewish faith celebrate Passover, starting April 12th, and that ends on April 19th. Earth Day is on April 22nd. And the next Commission's meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 16th, at 6:00 p.m. in Council Chambers, and all are welcome to attend. As you recall, March was Women's History Month, and the Human Relations Commission was proud to announce two women for being the first women with notable accomplishments, Evina White Buford and Kathy Devaney. And as I mentioned to you, Kathy was not here last month to receive her proclamation, but she is here this evening. So, we would like to share with you that she is the first female headmaster at the Hill School, and as the 12th head of the school in the Hill's 174-year history. Kathy began her tenure at the Hill School in July of 2023. For the past 31 years, she has been a dedicated and passionate educator, having served as a teacher, coach, and administrator at Deerfield Academy, and for 25 years at the Westminster Schools in Simbury, Connecticut, before joining the Hill community. During her time at Westminster, she served in a variety of capacities, including Assistant Head of School, Dean of Students, and Director of Student Life, all while remaining a committed classroom teacher in the History Department and coach. From 2018 to 2023, Kathleen was the founding Executive Director of Horizons at Westminster, a unique public-private school partnership, providing free academic and enrichment summer programming to Hartford, Connecticut-area youth to close opportunity gaps. Prior to beginning her impressive career in education, Kathleen worked in corporate banking in New York City and taught English in Germany as a Fulbright grant. She holds a BA from Bowdoin College and an MALS from Dartmouth College. Since her arrival at Pottstown, Kathy has remained committed to serving the greater community and fostering a strong relationship with Pottstown, especially through the Hobert's Run Initiative. Kathleen's husband, Mark Decanter, is a fellow administrator, teacher, coach, serves the Hill School as a member of the Science Faculty, an advisor and coach. They are proud parents of two children, Emmett and Samantha. We are very proud to have the first female headmaster in the 174-year history of the Hill School, Kathy Devaney.
Great.
Here's your proclamation from the mayor.
Thank you. Much taller than me.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Hello, everyone. My name, as Marsha said, is Kathleen Devaney, and I'm the 12th head of the Hill School. I'm not sure where to face, but I think I'll face perhaps you all. You've gone through my bio, I won't go, I won't go through it, but we arrived, my husband, Mark Decanter, and I arrived in Pottstown two years ago. I met some of you last year, and maybe even in that first summer when I arrived on campus, even during the Halloween Parade, dancing with the mayor, and all learning about Pottstown. I picked Pottstown and all the pride that exists in this city, and my husband and I are very proud to be citizens of Pottstown. I couldn't be more honored and humbled to be the first female head of school of the Hill School. As Marsha said, we, I'm the 12th head of school. I hadn't really thought about it, to be perfectly honest. That may sound like a cop-out, but it's not. It was the truth. I'd lived my life doing a lot of different things and working in schools for 33 years, and I thought about leading a school. And when I learned about the Hill School, I knew that this is a place I wanted to come and a community I wanted to lead, and it has been a fantastic start. I will share that just 25 years ago, the Hill School celebrated its 25 years of co-education. We had a big event to do that, and at the time, people asked me, what is it like to be a female head of school of a school that is 174 years old and has only known male heads of school? And all my, all I could really say is that I feel as though my gender has not been an event, not one way or the other, and I, I don't say that, as, to brush that off, I think that comes as a result of so many great people, men and women, boys and girls, who opened their arms and did the work before me, and are doing the work now to make it the place that it is, and Pottstown, indeed, the place that it is. I also think it's, I want to, I want to thank the Human Relations Commissions. I think, I hadn't, again, thought too much about firsts before, but without firsts, you can't have seconds, without seconds, thirds, and you don't get a main current. You need to have a current, and if the current gets too strong, then you don't have the first in the, in the side eddies where it needs to happen. It's really important to have a Women's History Month, to have a Black History Month. All those pieces create the attention, and the mentors, and celebrate the individuals, and also the, the fabric, that's so important, and that adds to the whole, that is the main current of all of our lives. So, I would like to just finish with saying, I feel really honored, I'm one of five kids. I've, I'm, I'm the youngest of five, I have four sisters and one brother, a great dad and a great mom. And my father passed away a long time ago, around 35 years ago, and my mom is still alive. But we moved around to our childhood home and found some different correspondence, and I think that I, I have been swimming in the water and breathing the air of people who were supporting me and genders all along the way. And so, my father, I don't know if you've ever had this experience, when you might read something your parents have written a long time ago, and you're like, oh, I hope it's okay, I hope it's good, I hope it's what I want it to be. So, my dad, ironically, if anyone was there, we just saw this great documentary at the Hill School that Evan Brant helped bring to town called Strip for Parts, giving sort of the history of the mercury and what happened to small-town papers. So, anyway, I was reading a letter from my, that my father wrote in 1975, and he wrote it to the Haven Register, a paper that doesn't exist anymore, because it's been stripped for parts. But my dad wrote, he did civic duty, I would have been seven years old at the time, and he said, "Dear sir, I've about had my fill of specious arguments about the equal funding for girls' sports that have been appearing in the editorial comment of this newspaper lately. The question here, sir, is not money, it's about equal opportunity under the Constitution, which is supposed to be available to everyone. It is every community living up to the letter of this doctrine. We wouldn't have it so, many sociological maladies that plague us today. As far as girls' sports are concerned, since when are the public high schools in the business of making money? Varsity sports are supposed to offer student athletes opportunities that develop their skills and provide enjoyment and rallying points for their supporters. If admissions fees pay some of the expensive, that's strictly serendipity. Trying to compare the situation of other schools is very fatuous. When we stop playing lip service to girls' sports and show we're serious about giving girls and even break with boys, you might be surprised at the talent we can draw from the girls' ranks in the way of players, coaches, and officials." I don't think my father knew he was writing that letter to me in many ways, but I am very thankful for the mother and father, for the family I've had, the upbringing, and for landing here in Pottstown. I think it is the great people who got us to where we are, and we're happy to be in this community. Thank you.
And from the library, Mr. Basoli.
Now, I think, as she touched on, there's a lot of symbolism in which way we face when we're at this microphone. Some would argue it's because the sun is in my eyes if I face this way, but that's completely false. I want you to put that right out of your head. So, first, the usual, the library had its fifth consecutive month of positive cash flows last month. Our fundraiser, if you, if you like positive cash flows, our fundraiser is tomorrow night at J.J. Rattigan's at 6:00 p.m. There will be a raffle, there will be trivia, some of which will admittedly be literary-themed, but some of which will be Pottstown-themed, and most importantly, naturally, I'll be there, so, you know. Now, on a more serious note, libraries are under attack. It's quite unfortunate. The IMLS has been defunded, from which our library and many other libraries draws grants and resources and training. Various interest groups are actually targeting individual libraries by going after their funding, finding that one little thing they did out of compliance, maybe three years ago, and then getting their state aid revoked as a result. This is a difficult time for libraries. We've been through difficult times before. We stand on the shoulders of thousands of years of knowledge preservation since the Library of Alexandria. We have no intention of going anywhere, but we're going to need help. And it's sad, because while a library might be able to be improved upon technically, the philosophical concept of a library cannot be improved upon, because we give you a book, all you have to do is sign your name, and we will give you 20 books, and we ask nothing from you, but to bring them back. That is about sharing knowledge, and it's about stewardship, and teaching children, and teaching our community about stewardship. And we want to be good stewards in this community, and we're going to do our best, but we might need your support in the coming years. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Joe. Joe, Joe, on your report, next time, could you do like the prior year's numbers as well, so we can see like a difference between 2023 and 2024, and 2024 and 2025?
So, Councilman, you want to see cash flows from?
No, just trying to do the same type of thing from, from the year before, that might show that your efforts and outreach is doing well, or not so well. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ricketts Community Center.
It's in your packet.
Nothing to add?
No.
And the School District, Counselor Lindsey's not here, so, Mayor Hendrick, your report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Since last time, we met with the owners of the Fairfield Inn, Opportunity House, and Eric Weber, and my advisory committee regarding concerns of some vagrancy and loitering, and we're going to be working closely with the businesses to put together a response team and address any issues. I was a panelist for Tri-County Dems, I spoke about running for local office and how important that is. I was honored to speak for the NAACP about Women's History Month, thankfully, we're still allowed to do that. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Pennsylvania, April, she's awesome, she came out and presented as well. March 31st, I got to do Meals on Wheels, which I do every year with ten Crest volunteers and consumers, and I love it so much, I wish I could do it more often, but if you ever want a rewarding volunteer experience, Meals on Wheels, Family Services down on High Street, need volunteers, and it's just a great, great experience. Hearts of Humanity did their first annual Pear Blossom Festival, which was great. Hopefully, next year, we'll get some more attendees. Key Leaders Meeting, we had our Key Leaders, Leaders Meeting on Drug and Alcohol Prevention this morning, starting up an anti-drug and alcohol coalition for youth based on the Communities That Care model, and I was happy to see that Chief was there as well, and I think that's going to be a, a great model going forward. As Headmistress Devaney mentioned, we had the screening of a film by Rick Goldsmith on Strip for Parts, American Journalism on the Brink. Evan Brant was a panelist, as well as some others. If you missed it, it was very cool. It will be on PCTV at some point, so just check your local listings. Upcoming events, April 11th is Dear Day, which is Drop Everything and Read Day. I am reading to the Rupert Elementary School. I encourage others to participate in your home, or wherever, you know, don't go up to random children, but people you know with a book, just take the time and read a small story. If anyone is looking to get into shape, or just to get out and clear their mind, Manitani Athletics on Wednesdays at 5:30 under the Clock Tower has weekly walk, run, and biking. The Complex on April 12th is having their Spring into Wellness from 12 to 3. Communities of Faith on April 18th is having their Good Friday Crosswalk at 10:00 a.m. April 19th, from 1 to 4, is the Easter Fair at Riverfront Park, hosted by Parks and Rec and Pottstown Community Arts. Earth Day is going to be celebrated in Bright Hope this year on April 21st, from 11 to 3. The YMCA is having a Healthy Kids Day on April 25th, from 5 to 7. There is a community cleanup at the Montgomery County Community College on April 26th, from 11 to 2, starting at North Hall. It's a pretty quick cleanup, and it's a good time, really good people that come out to that. And April 29th is a Town Hall on Fair Funding and Taxes at the Tri-County Active Adult Center from 6 to 7:30. April, sorry, no, we're in April. May 3rd, Designer Bag Bingo fundraiser for the CCLU is at 799 State Street from 6:30 p.m. And then, it's May coming up, which is kind of scary, so, the May 3rd and 4th, we have the Pow Wow on Manitani at Riverfront Park. Our calendar says 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I don't know if you expect us to get there at 6:00 a.m., but it's both days. May 4th is Sly Fox Goat Races from 12 to 5, if you need a description of what or where that is, I can't help you. Parks and Rec, our spring newsletter is out, so if you missed any of this stuff, please check our newsletter. Save the date, May 10th is the PPOA Fishing Derby, 12 and Under, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:30 at Memorial Park Pavilion, and I believe there's two dates, does anyone know? I saw two dates on the calendar. Okay. Rain date, which one's the rain date?
And then the rainy day.
Okay, thank you, sorry. All right, so the 10th, rain date's the 17th. Beacon of Hope is having their fundraiser, May 15th, from 5 to 7 at Ribbit. Pottstown Farm opens, 5:17, from 9 to noon. And they're having a Veterans Luncheon at Red Horse on May 17th at 12:00. You must sign up by April 15th, if you would like to attend. And last but not least, for May, on May 31st, we have Arts in the Park from 8 to 5 at Riverfront And so, last but, definitely not least, but the hardest thing that I'm going to have to say today, regarding the horrible events of Sunday night. First of all, I really want to thank and commend the Pottstown Police Department, along with other, other agencies that responded to assist. You really showed extraordinary care, and courage, and professionalism in a really dangerous and tremendously, tremendously difficult situation. So, thank you. Secondly, I want to express my relief that Officer Whitney is out of the hospital, and I wish him a speedy and full recovery. And finally, my heart breaks for the Eckers, and I would like to express my heartfelt sympathy to Aram and Donna and the Ecker family, who lost a son and a brother. There is a heavy sadness that has befallen our neighborhood, and while I can't even imagine to begin what they are going through, I want them to know that we are all grieving with them, and I pray that memories of a happier time can help them through this tragedy. So, again, Chief, Pottstown Police Department, all the responders, thank you, thank you. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
And from our manager, Mr. Keller.
Yes, yes, good evening, everyone. So, a couple of updates for you. First, on the bus charter service from Reading to Philadelphia, we are working with our bus for a license agreement to allow for a stop in Pottstown, and we are hoping to have an agreement ready next month. We'll have an update on Hanover Street, that's going to be closed for about two days at the end of the month. They're targeting April 28th, but that date could change. So, as of now, that's, that's what we know. Once we get closer to that date, we'll let everyone know, including like the businesses in the downtown, because it will be a full roadway closing, no traffic passing through for about two days. Some paving updates, we're conducting paving right now for the Authority's main project, and that'll be ongoing today on Arm and Hammer, and hopefully completed tomorrow, and then, following that, we'll complete other areas of the work. We had a meeting with PennDOT on the Hanover Street Road Diet, so they're going to get some revised plans back to us, and then, once they, they do that, we'll submit the request letter to PennDOT, so that will be updated with new pedestrian crossings and bike lanes. Keystone Boulevard, we're making progress on RFQ for engineering services for the extension of the roadway, and that'll allow us to begin to complete pre-construction engineering activities, such as the right-of-way utility and environmental clearances, that was funded through the House Appropriations Bill from Madeleine Dean's office. So, that'll be mainly for the engineering services related to that, so hopefully, we'll have that ready soon. Staff met with the county for a pre-construction meeting on the School River Trail Connection. This is the last connection between the 422 Bridge and Industrial Highway of about one mile, and that's supposed to be completed in August, but they discovered some contaminated soils, so it's looking like that could get pushed out a little bit further into the, into the fall, before they would finally get completion for that. And then, some good news on a sidewalk rant, so, we received $100,000 from Senator Pennycook, which will allow for the repair of sidewalks damaged by street trees. So, that'll really help us enhance pedestrian safety while protecting our trees and maintaining the canopy, and improve the overall walkability for the borough. So, that concludes my report.
Good, thanks. Now, you have a paving presentation?
Yes, we do.
You, Doug?
Yep. Yeah, Doug, you want to come on up? I'm going to stay up here. So, we'll try to go through this a little bit quicker for everyone this time, because mostly, everyone has seen it, but we're happy to be able to be here and present our 2025 paving plan for everyone. So, if you want to go to the next slide there, there we go. So, just to give you an overview, in the borough of Pottstown, we have 60 miles of roadway, we have 19 mile, miles of alleys, we have 10 miles of state roads, and the state roads are listed there, and they're the responsibility of PennDOT, and not the borough of Pottstown. There's four primary funding sources that we use to cover paving in the borough, so state funds, those are allocated to the borough from the Liquid Fuels Fund, which is a state gas tax, and this year, we're looking at about $800,000 that we'll be able to spend on paving. Also, the Borough Authority, via the Water and Sewer Main Replacements, they're doing .5 miles, actually, that was the project that I just updated you on in my manager's report, that we'll be completing in the next report, um, that we'll be completing in the next couple of weeks, that started in 2024, but because of the weather, the paving had to wait until 2025. And then PICO, as everyone's familiar with, all the detours in the downtown, um, they also provide funding for roadway paving, once they get done with their utility work. And then, lastly, in 2024, if you recall, we collected a, um, impact fee, uh, from the Authority, uh, for roadway improvements on certain roadways, um, that relates to, uh, roads that would get degraded over time from the trucks that are traveling in and out of the wastewater, uh, treatment plant, so those roadways are listed there for you. And then, uh, we set aside about $25,000 in our annual, dollars in our annual budget, uh, for the maintenance of Pottstown's roadways, to things like filling potholes. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Doug Yurger, to go over the roadway rating system.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, so we, we rate the, the roads on a five, one to five basis. Uh, they start out, once we pave them, we end up giving them one, and then we watch the progression as the road wears, and generally speaking, it takes about 20 years till we get to a point where it really needs to get paved. Um, the one represents basically a new road surface. Uh, till we get to a, a two, we're starting to see cracks in the roadway, and as we go on to three, there's more cracks, they're more pronounced across the whole block, and then eventually we get to a point where we've got potholes developing, and we're patching those. We get to five, we put them on our list for paving. Of course, depending on the severity of the winter, the, the freeze-thall cycles, we end up ending up with a lot of fives, and some, some years it's tough to separate all the fives, because there's just so many of them. We're starting to get a little bit caught up on some of this, but, you know, we know sort of get a couple, you know, get the numbers down, and then there's a lot behind it again coming up, so. But you can see the progression of how the road starts to deteriorate. Certainly in three and four, you start to see the cracking that's going on, and by the time we get to a number five, there's usually potholes and patches on top of patches, just trying to hold it together. So, that's how we, we come up with our, our, our listing of what we wanna look at, and then we have to prioritize them from there, once we get that, that group together. So, on the map would be the next, uh, uh, well, let's see, okay, these are the totals, so right now we have on, on the fives, we have, uh, uh, the rating on that, and then the, the total, so we have, what, uh, 22?
Yeah, 22.5.
Five, and then we have on, on the, the blue, which is the total miles, we have 60. So, it, it's, you know, you can see where we're at, I mean, right now we're doing the, the gray at, uh...
4.21.
4.2, and, uh, um, you know, it's, it's, but it's been good, because over the last, I'm gonna say, five, eight years now, we've had a, a constant fi- funding through the liquid fuel, so we've been able to have a constant, uh, supply of money to, to attack the, 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 um, paving, and that's been a, a real positive, uh, situation where we didn't have in the past. Uh, we relied on capital money, and a lot of times that was hard to, to come by capital money, so the liquid fuel at least gives us a good, uh, ongoing funding basis for keep, trying to keep up with things.
And then Doug, could you talk a little bit about the coordination that we do for underground utility projects?
Yeah, this is a real tough situation. I mean, we have not only water pipes under the road, we have sewer pipes, we have stormwater pipes, and then we have the other utilities. We have the gas company, and trying to keep all those different budgets, and that's what it comes down to. We all, all those different entities have different budgets and different priorities, so it's hard sometimes to keep, keep some of these things from not happening, where we pave the road, and then two years later, something like that, we end up having to dig it up, or somebody has to dig it up, whether it's a water break, or a gas main leak, or something like that, so we try and keep all these things coordinated to the point where we try and load our, line up our own budgets from storm, sewer, and water, and try and make sure that the, the infrastructure, that once we pave that road, is in fairly good condition, so we don't have to dig it up. Uh, there's always situations, though, when we're done paving, there always seems like there's a road somewhere that just starts to leak right after we get done with it, and we have to dig it up. Um, and mostly they're just repair patches, they're not real big, but still, it, once you disturb that mad blacktop, it's just hard to put it back the way it was. So, that, that's an ongoing e- issue. We look at sewer pipes, we, we go back and look at videos, we have a lot of videos of the inside of our pipes and stuff, and we try and keep track on, on what kind of conditions they're, they're in. The, uh, we have a lot of clay pipe, and clay pipe is a real problem, because it's so brittle, but we have over 50 miles of clay pipe yet in the sewer system. We have water pipes that go back to the 1800s yet, cast iron pipe, and, uh, knock on, it, it's not a big problem, they, they made them well in those days, so we don't have a lot of problems with them, but they are cast iron, and when they do break, it's, it's a problem. So, we, we're trying to keep everything coordinated, but like I said, like even, you know, the gas company, they started in twen- last year in doing a considerable amount of work, and we tried to keep up with some of that, but it, there was overlaps, and, and we couldn't help it, we're, this year we have been able to minimize it, they gave us a, a schedule for this year, so we're trying to minimize that, but we just have a couple of spots where the road is really in bad shape, so I think there is one road we're gonna try and pave it, and then hope they don't have many, uh, service lines to connect. Just run the main, it's not such a big deal, but when they run the perpendicular cuts to put the services back in, then you end up with a lot more holes. So, we're trying to, trying to keep that in check.
Yeah, and one of the other coordinate, points of coordination that we do, and you'll see this later on, on the agenda, are joint projects that we do with adjacent municipalities. So, when we have a roadway that is bisected by a municipal, uh, line right down the middle, we try to coordinate that with the adjacent municipalities, so that we're paving that road at, at the same time, and you don't get a seam in it. Um, it, it makes for a much better, uh, riding surface over the long term, when you, when you do it that way, and just kind of is common sense, if you're gonna pave a road, pave both sides of it, so that you have continuity there. Um, so, and the way that we do that is we split those costs proportionately with the other municipalities, um, based on the area that we'll be, uh, covering with our paving. So, now, down to what we're going to be doing this year, um, so through the state liquid fuels funds with the borough, we'll be paving 4.21 miles. Through PICO, uh, they'll be paving about 2.48 miles, so in total, uh, 6.69 miles, uh, that will be repaved in 2025 in the borough. Um, so here is a map, um, you also have a map at your, uh, seats tonight, um, if you wanna look that over. The red represents the paving that would be done by the Borough of Pottstown, the green represents the paving that'll be done by PICO. So, there's two main areas of PICO work, one in the downtown, what we're, what we're calling kind of along the, um, Evans Street, uh, corridor area, and then another one around the, um, uh, Roland Street, uh, area, and we are coordinating with the, uh, school district to stage the downtown project first, which they're gonna start soon, so that, um, they'll start the one, uh, around, uh, this, the elementary school, uh, after that lets out in June. So, we have about 22 miles, rated as number five, um, and we have very few alleys that are ordained or, or adopted, and the law says that they are the responsibility of the adjoining, um, property owners. Um, and, and the state says that we can't use liquid fuels funds to, uh, pay for them, but what we can do is if there's a pothole, we can try to fill it, um, we can try to add some stone, or, um, create the alley so that it's, uh, a little more of an even, uh, riding surface. And then we also have some grant funding sources available for alternate paving techniques in some situations, so we keep our eyes open for those opportunities, um, as well as we do recycle our millings. So, when we do the millings, we keep those, and then we'll spread those out in the, in the alleys to fill out some of the divots that, that get created there. Um, so, since they're, they're not ordained, many of them are not ordained and adopted by, by the borough, um, we, and we don't have money to pave them, um, the best that we can do is try to, try to patch them up and keep them in good shape. But if homeowners want to create a more substantial improvement, like repaving the alley altogether, um, they can do that, provided that a process is, is followed, so they would need to talk to the neighbors in the adjoining alley, get their permission from that, and then, um, they would need to talk to the borough to get a permit, it would be a free permit for them, um, and what we would do is essentially make sure that whatever they're doing to that alleyway surface, they're not changing it in a way that is going to create, um, issues with stormwater flow onto adjacent properties. So, that's the main thing, when you get into alleys, because a lot of the alleys in town were never surveyed, um, they were just kind of built, uh, so once you start to change them, you can, you can change the hydrology, people's garages can start getting wet, their basements can start getting wet, and that kind of thing, so, um, you really have to have a survey done to make sure that that's not gonna be the case when you would resurface, uh, an alleyway. And then importantly, really, all the adjacent property owners to the improvement should be signing a, um, an agreement and a release, um, that, that they're in agreement with the work to be completed, and they're not gonna, uh, hold the contractor, or whoever's contracting that work responsible, um, if, if something were to, um, change. More than likely, if, if something were changed, it would be something with the stormwater, so that's why we need to review it, uh, make sure that we minimize that risk. Um, potholes, I mean, obviously Pennsylvania's a tough location for potholes, we have a lot of freeze and thaw, and, um, that's what creates major, major potholes. And, uh, we, we really, we, we fill them year-round, but we really kick up our pace right now in the spring, um, uh, late winter to early spring, as soon as the weather will permit and the ground starts to thaw out, uh, we go in and start filling. Um, and then for the potholes, we use, uh, cold patch mainly, uh, to fill those. If, um, somebody wants to report an issue with a street, with a pothole, with an alley, uh, we would encourage them to use our online service request system, um, it ensures that we get all your information, so that we can get back to you to, in case there was, something wasn't clear, uh, about what the request was, and it also directs that request to the staff member that needs to get it, and in some cases, even the member that needs to go out and perform that work. So, you can find that, uh, service request button on our webpage, and, um, you can also call us, um, at the Public Works Office, or send us an email, publicworks@pottstown.org for a Borough roadway, for a PennDOT roadway, um, you can call 1-800-FIX-RIDE, um, and they will get someone to take care of that as well. So, in addition to the map, councilors, you have the list of streets, uh, shown. Um, we would like to get your endorsement to move forward with putting this out to bid on Monday night, so, um, let us if you know, let us know if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you, Doug.
And, uh, do you have any intermunicipal agreements?
Yes.
We have one with Lower.
We do, so this will be paving for, uh, Adams Street, and this will be in the area between Mervine and Prospect Street, so, um, this'll be a, a joint project. Um, Lower Potts Grove will bid and award the project, and the borough will reimburse the township for the costs incurred. It is, it's expected that the borough's estimated total cost will be approximately $53,000. Um, I just wanna note that our cost is actually gonna be slightly higher than the townships, because that section of Adams Street on our side is actually wider, I think, to accommodate the on-street parking. So, that's why we incur an additional cost, because we're using more, uh, material on our side. So, township is in the process of bidding this, and then, once the bids would come in, we can finalize the agreement and, uh, with, with the final costs, and then also add the necessary, uh, exhibits. We expect that this project will move forward, um, at some point, uh, this summer.
Okay.
So, we'll ask for your approval to move forward with that agreement on Monday night.
Very good. We'll add that for Monday. Uh, 11 is zoning, 101 College Drive, Mr. Garner.
Uh, good evening, Dan, good evening, everyone. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Um, the first zoning application in front of you this evening is co-applicants of Montgomery County Community College and the Community Health Dental Care. Um, they are seeking a variance to permit a mobile professional office for dental services. Um, according to the application, they would provide the services to, uh, faculty at the college, students at the college, and patients of community health. This is, uh, not permitted use in the district, and they are seeking a variance. Obviously, council has the ability to, uh, send it to the zoning hearing board, uh, oppose it or support it. Uh, staff's recommendation is that at this point, allow the zoning hearing board to hear the case and decide it on the merits. This would not be a permanent location, obviously, but it would be a mobile facility. I believe you have the application and information in your packet, and if you have questions, I'm happy to try and answer.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, how long would this, uh, be running for? Is there like a end time, date?
Do you mean for purposes of years, or do you mean...
Yeah, yes.
...for week? Um, the, the variance, if it's granted without conditions, it would be allowed to, uh, operate permanently at that site. Um, there's not any information in the application to suggest how frequently this unit would be at the property. The zoning hearing board, of, of course, would wanna know that.
So, thank you. So, it's not permanent, but it's permanent?
Well, it's permanent in the sense that if the variance is granted, this, this mobile office could be there a- as long as they want to operate, um, unless the zoning hearing board imposes a condition, just like any other variance, granted it goes with the property.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll list that for Monday. And while I have you, Chuck, uh, 233 Shoemaker Road.
Sure, this, this is the Walmart property, and you may have noticed that, uh, for a while in the past, Walmart has had storage containers at their property. Um, the zoning officer noted that that's not a permitted use, this is considered outdoor storage. Uh, Walmart has now done the proper thing and requested zoning relief in the form of a var-. According to the application, they are seeking permission to allow 13 of these storage units, I believe the size is 8 by 40. Um, they'd be located behind the store, so they'd be shielded by the store itself, I don't think they'd be visible to anyone, uh, from the front of the store, and the period of time would be from September to March that they want these units. Uh, again, it's a variant situation, uh, your options are the same as the others, you can take no action, you can support or oppose the application. Uh, I know the zoning officer is happy that Walmart has at least gone forward and, and submitted the zoning application, so they can either legitimize this use, or it'll be turned down, but, uh, it's up to you if you wanna take any position.
Any questions? I have one. Uh, he said 11, 8 by 40 trailers would be giving them another 3,500 square foot of warehousing. Uh, would that be subject to tax?
That would, that would be up to the Montgomery County Board of Assessment. It's certainly not a permanent building, so I would say no, Dan, it probably would not be.
Hmm, but if they built an addition of 3,500 feet, that would be?
You are correct.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll list that for Monday. And, uh, 502 Hale Street, Mr. Garner.
Uh, thank you. Um, this is a, uh, currently a vacant property on Hale Street. I believe the lot size is just above 6,300 square feet, it's a relatively small lot. Originally, the applicant had proposed a one-building, four-unit apartment, that building really didn't fit on the lot, uh, came back with a revised plan to, uh, basically create a two-lot subdivision for a set of twin homes on the prop. Uh, it went before the Planning Commission at the March meeting. Uh, I believe, again, in your packet, you have all the information with respect to the plan, what the twin homes like, the, uh, review letters of our consultants. Uh, Planning Commission did recommend, uh, preliminary final approval of this, uh, minor subdivision land development, subject to the applicant complying with the consultant review letters.
land development, subject to the applicant complying with the consultant review letters and getting any necessary third-party permits and approvals. In addition, I believe there was a request for waivers. Four waivers were requested, relatively standard waivers. That waiver request letter was dated March 10th. That's also in your packet. Planning commission recommended that you consider granting those waivers. Dan, did did I miss any as far as?
No, the the only um point of uh discussion was some of the older trees and they agreed to replace them in kind. Otherwise, planning commission is uh fully supportive of this.
And if there are any, if they're short of trees by the ordinance, they've agreed to pay a fee in lieu of trees. So the final count will be made uh when the final plan submitted.
No questions, no discussion. We'll add that for Monday.
Yeah, that would be listed for Monday night. That would be two motions. Uh if council's inclined to do so, one would be to approve the plan with conditions, and the second motion would be to grant the waivers if you're inclined to do.
Fine. Uh next would be 601 High, Chuck.
Yeah, I'll continue with that if that's okay, Dan.
Yeah.
Um council should be familiar with this project. This is the permanent shelter that was the subject matter of zoning hearing board a number of years ago. If you recall, the zoning hearing board variance 601 West High Street to house this permanent shelter. There were a number of conditions that were imposed uh with the granting of the variance. Uh the applicant will need to, of course, comply with all of those conditions, whether they be operational or whether they be uh and development related. So the property itself is about 2.4 acres in size. The applicant is proposing a building of about 13,800 square feet. Uh there will be a parking lot area. There will be fencing and landscaping. I believe you have a proposed building elevation in front of you that the applicant has shared. Um the z- ordinance for the Gateway District allows the zoning officer to approve the elevations. It also allows for the zoning officer to uh punt or defer to council. So at some point, you will have to make a final decision on whether the elevation is satisfactory or not. Um for purposes of um Monday night, uh the planning commission has recommended approval of this project. Um again, it was subject to compliance with the various consultant letters that were issued. Uh in addition, I it goes without saying, but I I can't stress it enough, any operational issues or any land development issues need to comply with this conditions of the zoning hearing board and the applicant to demonstrate that to the satisfaction of uh like inspections and the borough engineer. Uh there was a request for waivers and I would say for a project this size, there are only three waivers. Uh they are typical. One was not show physical features and topography within 100 feet. The second was for existing features within 100 feet. And the third one was to treat the plan as a preliminary final plan. Um the applicants here tonight, if you have any questions, I think council has been familiar with this project for some time. Uh but if there are any questions, we're happy to answer them. If you feel it's ready and the planning commission did feel it's ready, um you can act on it Monday night with the two proposed motions that we would draft.
No discussion. We'll listen for Monday.
Did just just uh clarify one thing. Did you have want to present the elevate? We have it. Do you want to present it tonight or or?
If council would like to look at it, we I have no problem presenting it for you guys.
Sure. Is that something council would like to see? Yeah, yeah.
I have our copies too if you want somebody to look at.
I'm sorry. I thought the.
Sure.
I apologize.
And if you don't mind, because we're putting you on the spot.
Yeah. Here's front and back, opposite corner.
Thank you. There you go.
Thank you.
So council, since you're just getting the information of elevations evening, um if you're inclined to take action Monday night, the motion would be conditioned upon you approving the elevations. That doesn't mean you're approving this elevation. You'd have time to look at it and and digest it. Uh but and the zoning officer at first glance seemed to think it was uh met the requirements of the gateway ordinance. But again, that's going to be the determination to make that decision.
Anything? Anyone?
I do not.
Um looking at the, none of the waivers that they are asking for are in any way um odd or anything other than normal, that are normally granted in pretty much every land development. So they're not asking for anything.
Nope.
Crazy or that we need to be doing, be really concerned about because it is always, these are pretty much normal.
I I would agree with you, Andrew. They they very typical waiver requests for almost any project. Um and for a large project, to not have more free is unusual, frankly.
Okay.
What were you gonna say?
And I can confirm, uh we are complying with the zoning uh order of 2022, uh land development wise, um with you know, the the certain stipulations that were uh put in front of us to make sure we're adhering to all of those as well to make sure we're not asking for anything.
Okay.
So on, I have a question. So on the building, you're showing um like a like a stone or a fake stone um foundation and then what? Explain to us the materials for the building.
I can get you uh more detailed from the developer. Um I do everything on the outside. Um so I can talk to the developer to get a a list of what he would like it for it to be.
Yeah.
Materials-wise, to make sure that it's compliant with everything.
Sure.
That's needed and take counsel's opinion into account as well.
Okay, great.
I have a question.
Go ahead and.
Um so it's a concrete slab, stone veneer, uh 40 inches and then steel side, steel.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It looks innocuous to me, so.
We'll list that for Monday. And where are we now? CDBG grant.
Yes. Um so we'd like to authorize or have council authorize a submission of a community of development block grant application um with Montgomery County Health and Human Services in the amount of $200,000. And this would be for the Phase 4 stormwater inlet project. And basically, this is a project which would be a continuation of efforts that we have had um before to correct drainage in areas where sump pumps discharge into the street and cause premature roadway degradation. So our match uh would be the engineering services and that would be paid for through the authority's annual $50 or $50,000 contribution to address sump pod drainage issues uh on borough streets.
Questions? We'll list that for Monday. Team and uh ordinance amendment, Mr. Garner.
Uh yes, thank you, Dan. Uh in 2017, council threw an ordinance um approved the organization known as Montgomery County Western SWAT. And uh the existing membership was approached by East Greenville, Pensburg, and Marlborough, seeking to become part of the Montgomery County SWAT. Uh I understand the chiefs met and felt that this would be appropriate to allow these municipalities to join the SWAT. Um because you approved it by ordinance originally, in order to enlarge or expand the SWAT membership, you have to do it by ordinance. Uh I am told that all of the other municipalities that are part of SWAT are in the process of preparing ordinances or resolutions to approve the expansion of of the membership. So uh we'll have ready for you Monday night if you uh are inclined to do it. That would allow the expansion of SWAT to have these three municipalities become members. And chief, is there, if there's something I, they'll counsel in on that, but I think I think that's the gist of what we're doing.
Anything to add, chief? Okay. Any questions? All right, we'll act on that Monday evening. With the SWAT. And uh street closures.
Yes, so.
Coming to that season.
We're coming to that season. Before I before I go to that, I just want to go back to one thing um with the paving, since we have the head of school, Dovani, here. Uh last year, uh the Hill School contributed to uh paving Sheridan Street. And that was a joint project that we undertook with the Hill School. Um it was a complete roadway rebuild. I think we had some utility infrastructure that we were working on there as as well. Um some sidewalks got rebuilt as a part of that. So um public nonprofit partnerships are another way that we sometimes get our paving funding funded. And I just want to um thank the Hill School uh for their contribution towards that uh effort while you were here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to the uh street closure request. So um the first one that we have up is the uh Juneteenth Celebration. Um this will be from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Closure of High Street between York and Charlotte and Hanover Street between King and South Street.
Okay. And 18 is, oh, the Ambucks.
Yep, the Ambucks. They're gonna be back for their Soapbox Derby, 6:30 AM to 6:00 PM. Uh that'll be a closure of Wilson Street between State and um Farmington. And that, I think that was a street that was recently uh dug up and and being repaved by Pico. So that should be in good shape by the time they get out there.
Good. Uh then the Red Horse.
The car shows will be from uh 1:00 to 9:00 PM at the various dates listed, essentially the first Saturday of the month. It'll be West High Street from College Drive uh to East High Street at Evan Street and then Hanover from uh King to the railroad tracks.
Okay. Uh the Fedenblatt.
The Fett will be 4:00 to 10:00 PM. Uh they're asking for a closure of High Street between York and Hanover.
Okay, we'll we'll do that Monday, Peggy. All right, uh where were you? Street closure. Memorial Day Parade, that's coming up soon.
Yes, the Memorial Day Parade. Uh this is a joint veterans committee, 10 to 11:00 AM um on High Street uh north to Manatani, uh up to Memorial Park. I believe they start at um Madison um down to Memorial Park.
Right. And last is the Patriotic Five K.
Correct. This is on July 4th, 7:30 AM to 9:15 PM. A little bit different. This year will be um Beach Street uh the near the Ricketts Community Center between Adams and Grant Street. And then they're gonna head east to Beach, Price, High, York, Chestnut, and Grant Streets. So this won't be a full street closure, but it'll it'll be a rolling street closure as the uh runners come through.
Okay, good. Uh 23 is a discussion. Counselor Proskel.
Yes.
You lead us in this.
Yeah, well, regretfully, the basis of this of this discussion is I'm pretty much sick of people shooting at each other around me and my family and my constituents. It's uh unfortunately, it's, you know, even though the currents were down last year, I don't believe we had any gun-related homicides. It happens in the first ward more than most people think. And last week, I sent um all of you a video of a collage of uh almost a four-minute video of all the shootings I've caught on my cameras for the last few years. And that's something I generally like to talk about up here. Usually talking about like happy things and parades and things like that. But in this case, uh probably I need to bring it up. Anytime that happens, generally, I ask the police officers or chief, you know, Markovich, you know, what else, you know, can I do, you know, for you? And throughout the years, I guess the issue of bail reform has come up. And for the for the most part, I mean, bail reform is a good thing. And I'm sure how familiar, I could send you a article of what it is and uh what's been happening the last few years. You know, basically, somebody gets, you know, convicted of a covered cotton, you know, like a low-level crime, like a petty theft or might have some potter or something like that. He, the bail will, they'll let him out in with reduced bail so he doesn't lose his job, his apartment, and that leads to more issues for him. But the the problem is, you know, at least recently in in so many cases, that's uh violent offenders are are let out. Uh our local M- uh MDJs are good guys and they generally don't let that happen. But in the last few years, that um duty has been extended to other magistrate judges throughout the county. So so what I thought, we're not the only ones having issue with that. There's actually a state, you know, Senate Bill 940 that's on the floor now that deals with this as well. So what I thought we could do is uh there's a letter prepared for consideration to President Judge Carluccio. And, you know, she kind of resides over all these MDJs. I bet there's 16 of them. You know, kind of politely, you know, telling the issues that we're having. And then with a a series of case summaries uh that the police department has provided, that uh the decisions on those judges on bail did not work very well for us. And uh and hopefully she'll, obviously, obviously reads it and maybe even brings it up to, I think, they have a weekly judicial conference where they all meet and take and take into consideration. And the idea is that uh if you fire a gun at somebody here in Pottstown illegally, you don't get out the next day. And you keep that, you keep that up because it's uh, it's trying. It really is. It's uh and then basically we give the department policeman, uh police department any, every advantage that we can. And I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not moving. I mean, I still consider Pottstown a safe place to live. I mean, my kids are playing around, but I think we can make it safer with this. So I hope you would, you know, sign on to how this letter set.
Thanks. Any questions or? Any comments, questions?
I don't disagree uh with you. I think maybe we've swung too far um in the other direction.
Yeah. And I don't think these judges are out to get Pottstown or anything like that.
No.
Just a few, you know, cases where, yeah, that that's that's bad. I don't know if you did, did you read them or or you go ahead, would have been if you haven't.
No, I've had this conversation in the past too. Um and I'm glad that you brought it up because it didn't start yesterday. It's been going on for some time, so.
Yeah, there's.
I do, I would support you there.
Guys.
Anyone else?
Brian, I thought it was really well-written. My only suggestion would maybe to bold, like pull out the hot-button words from those offenses, those summary paragraphs of those offenses because they're bad, right? And I want her eyes to go to like gun or drug or what have you. Um and my other suggestion would be to possibly be a little more um, lack of a better word, forceful at the end, instead of asking maybe for a meeting, maybe giving them deets that you would be available or the borough would be available to hopefully meet in the next couple of months. Um just so it doesn't get off her radar.
Yeah, we're just also, you know, taking care, because I don't want to upset her necessarily either because I I don't know her very well. But that's a good, that's definitely a good suggestion.
I don't find that letter upsetting at all. Like, I, it's not, it's very well-written and it points out. I mean, these judges see many, many, many cases every day.
Yeah, full disclosure, I had a lot of help from uh, you know, Matt, he's a colleague, John Hahn. He's he's a really good guy that that kind of helped me because I didn't know the difference between the levels of felonies and things like that. So.
But I I just, I don't see it. It's not attacking them. It's basically informing them. I thought it was well-written.
I'm curious, is there any um documentation or or numbers that show that offenders are, you know, a a more more of the offenders are people who's out on bail? Is there any numbers for that?
Repeat, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, just, you know, at least the ones in the video, about half of those are just, you know, even for a violent crime, those are particularly important to me because I don't know how many, Chief Markovich, I get those and those numbers for you. But usually they get in a gunfight with somebody and they're let out the next day or a week or they're upset at them for either getting shooting at them or they want to come back and finish the job. And then it kind of perpetuates itself. And actually, the, I'm sure you know, the the incident we had at Rickett Center was, you know, from a series of gun violent incidents that happened in 2022, I think. So it keeps on going. In some ways, the individual's safer to be in jail because. In some ways, the individual's safer to be in jail because they might come and get him when he gets out.
Andrew?
No, I'm, I'm very happy and ecstatic to see that Ryan is spearheading this. And I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, but we just had a kind of a rough first year. I mean, after the Rickett Center and there was a shooting right in front of my house a week before then, I was just like, that's it. I don't know, that's, what else can I do?
Your passion is appreciated.
Oh, and of course, you know, Matt and Justin and, you know, Chief helped out quite a bit too, so.
So, uh, yeah, I'm just wondering, and, and we've been helping out on this, and I wasn't aware of the, the state bill. If it makes sense, if we've had time to review the state bill and if we're in.
I'll send you the article if you want.
If we're in agreement with that, would we want to ask council to send both a letter of support for the state bill and a letter to the, the judge on Monday night, maybe?
That one in particular, it, it bans, uh, you know, non-monetary bail for, there's a list of criteria for that in the article, which I'll send, which, you know.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, aggression versus a police officer or, you know, fleeing the scene against, there's several of them. There were like ten plus, more than, you know, ten grands of penalty or something like that. But I'll send you all those and you could, you guys could decide, yeah.
Okay, you'll copy all of us.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll list this for Monday evening, and I'm gonna ask all of you counselors to join Ryan and sign this letter before we mail it. Very good. Board vacancies. Harb has a one-year term to expire April first, 2027, and one to expire April first, 2025. Campbell is reappointed, asking for reappointment.
Yes.
Any questions? List that for Monday. And on human relations, one four-year term to expire May eighth, 2025. Do you have someone for that?
Uh, we would appoint that in, at the May meeting.
Okay, very good. Comments from citizens?
All right, first up, we have Brian Hyder, please.
Uh, good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Hyder. I am currently on the Planning Commission and the Blighted Property, uh, Commission. But I didn't come here to, like most people, and ask for anything or complain about anything. I'm actually here to tell you guys you're doing a swell job, keep up the good effort. Uh, I really wanted to speak about the homelessness issue and Beacon of Hope Project. I hope this goes through quickly. I've been involved with that at the, you know, Planning Commission, and we passed it. And I have mixed feelings about the hotel, but for now, I guess that's lesser of two evils. But my other question was, and I've noticed this over the last couple of weeks, listening to everybody from the county, from Beacon, from, there doesn't seem to be any quantitative number for the homeless actually in the Pottstown area. I don't know if we have a commission or someplace where we can get exact numbers, but I've heard anywhere from a hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty. And I think the project with Beacon is great as long as that takes care of most of the situation. Otherwise, it's a big step and keep up the good work. And let's hope we can take care of this big problem in the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Doug Slick. All right, next up, we have Denise Williams, please.
Hello, everyone. How you doing? Good to see you. Just wanted to come up and tell you about Juneteenth. You guys are gonna vote on that, but I wanted to give everybody a quick, like, update of what you can expect. We're having multiple events, so you're only approving the street's closure on the fourteenth, so don't panic. On the fourteenth, expect everything that you saw last year, plus more, a family reunion. So I hope that each of you come out. But we are honored to be able to have our first pageant. So we're going to have our legacy leaders, which will be our high school leaders that will represent the community and be our first Juneteenth pageant winners. We also have princesses and princesses. But during that time, one of the things that I'm excited about is that we're gonna have a youth business fair expo. So only our youth from the ages six to nineteen will be able to vent during that pageant. So this is truly an event that's going to empower, talk about legacy, talk about community, talk about culture, helping our younger, empowering our younger generation. Then we have our street, the festival on the fourteenth, where we have volunteers. We have some service, service projects going on during that time, job shadowing, mentoring. Those are the things that you'll see behind the scenes. We have the gala where we now, or have already secured funding for seven $900 scholarships. So I'm really proud about that because each year we have raised the amount. It started at 350 and now it's at $900 for students, for seven students. So if you know a Pottstown or Pottsgrove student, that is an opportunity for them to get that scholarship. And then lastly, during that, lastly, we're having a community worship service, and that'll be on the 29th. And that is gonna bring everybody together at the end. We're in a really critical stage in our community and our nation. So I'm actually more excited about the last event, even though we're gonna party on the fourteenth. But I definitely want to make sure that I invited all each of you out and let you know that as this event continues to grow, it's more than an event, it's about empowering, uplifting, bringing the community together, providing opportunities, providing empowerment. So I just want to make sure that you understand the true meaning behind everything that goes on and want to make sure I invite you, and I'm sure you'll see me again.
Very good. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. And from the counselors, Counselor Kirkland, anything to add?
I just want to also commend the police officers, first responders for the event last Sunday. Also, you know, let's not forget about the family, you know, the Eckert family. I, I, I called him today, oh, yesterday, and, um, yeah, he, he's, just remember the family. And I also called the officer, and, um, so, um, yeah, just, just pray for both of them.
Okay, Counselor Minaster.
Yeah, a couple of things. I would like to piggyback on my friend here, okay, about what he just said. And I also would like to commend our police force, and especially our chief, on the tremendous job he did with that incredibly stressful and dangerous situation. It was spectacular work on his part. On that part, a couple of announcements that were missed. The Edgewood Cemetery cleanup that was scheduled for this Saturday has been postponed due to inclement weather. It is rescheduled for May the third. Hope Art's Run on April 26th is having an Adopt a Great and Gutter event, which means they're going to go around and clean up the grates and the gutters that sometimes get clogged with various refuse. And so that is at April 26th, they clean up the squirm gates. I would also encourage people to attend the library fundraiser. We have been, some more than others, have challenged the library to be better, okay, and to do better. And I have seen a marked response in their, and they are doing better. And so I think everyone should encourage them by attending their fundraiser on the 10th at Radigan's. Last thing I want to talk about is Pottstown. What I've noticed about Pottstown is Pottstown is, is a town of passion, really good passion. For example, my friend Joe and Johnny here, they're very passionate about the Rickett Center. My friend Peggy's very passionate about paid. My friend Doug and Tom, they're very passionate about the unhoused. I'm passionate about a cemetery, okay? The Hope Art's Run is passionate about the community. We are, we're, we have so much passion in this town. Sometimes passions interact, and they interact in a bad way. One Saturday, I was sent a photograph of a Pottstown Facebook post. And what it is, it is a person who is either unhoused or impersonating an unhoused person who is on High Street, on broad daylight, in the middle of the, on, on the Edgewood Cemetery property grate, defecating. Oh, and it was, and it was, and it was done as a Facebook post, as it was funny. It's not funny, it never was funny, and it never will be funny. It's wrong. Now, I did a little investigating, and I'm finding out that there has been more defecating on the Culbriquetale Rail Train Station. That's really a shame because that passionate man was very instrumental in getting funding for the Days Inn Shantel Shelter. And his station is being trashed. So what I say to the passionate people for the unhoused, as you have asked us for assistance, and we have helped you, we have. So I'm going to ask you for assistance into spreading the message in the community that you are ministering to, and we appreciate that, to get the message to them that that is not acceptable, and that if it continues, they will be prosecuted. I will do everything I can to make sure that they are prosecuted so that they, so that one passion doesn't hurt another passion. And I would appreciate that very, very much. That's all.
Press President Lebedinsky.
I don't have anything.
Counselor Vanny.
Um, yes, just a quick thing. Well, first, I want to extend my condolences as well, like everybody else. On a positive note, the company I work for gives us off on Monday, April 7th, for their Founder's Day. And I got the opportunity to, the weather was bad, but go to Ryers Farm. I reminded myself to say that because I still have some extra horse treats in my pocket. If you've not been there, please go. That, they do such amazing things, and I don't think that we talk, talk about them enough. They take care of retired and rescued horses, and they are beautiful creatures. And for, I think it's $4 a bag, you can get some treats and you can go around and visit with the horses. And luckily for me, it was rainy, so I didn't get to do my gardening work, but I got to spend time with, his name is Farley. He is a beautiful horse, he followed me around. I'd like to think he likes me, but I think it was just for the treats. But please go visit, volunteer, donate. You can adopt a horse, meaning you will pay and take care of that horse for a year. So go to their website and go for a visit. That's all I have.
Great, Counselor Proskel.
I would just like to acknowledge the passing of a really good neighbor, Grandma Lee Roy. She's just a couple houses down from me, and she was a foster grandparent at Rupert, and she's a real nice lady. So it was, I'm sorry, it's a year ago. And, and of course, my condolences in, for the tragedy that happened this weekend, it's terrible.
Let, let me announce that I finally took the opportunity to visit the Days Inn Shelter, for lack of a better name. I was there Monday, I was greeted by two of their staff. And the first thing I noticed is behind the main desk, they have two large video screens. And I did the count, they must have 48 active cameras running all the time, watching the property, recording what's going on. And they told me they have at least three security people there at all times. Kim, one of their directors or whatever, gave me a tour, took me to the area where there are some rehabilitation classes or advisement going on. And also told me they, they now started hosting AA meetings. It's not comprehensive yet, but it's a start. And, uh, I have absolutely nothing negative to report of what's going on there right now and only hope that it'll continue to get better and better. And, you know, if you other counselors want to go, please, they'd love to show you around, show us their progress. It was either sermon or Kim said, "To date," and they've only been operating a few weeks. They have three transition people, people that came there, cleaned up, got clean clothes, got interviews, and got hired. So I think that's pretty good progress for the short time they've been there, and we all hope they continue. And that's all from me, so meeting adjourned.